A long process is opened up to the town and the residents of the community. And I know Leslie Powell will brief you on that. I just wanted to say that the, any annexation, like all the other major subdivision development that has happened in the town over many years, is a town building event. And it's not driven just by the individual property owner and the desires of that developer or the investors in the project. It's driven also by the goals and objectives of the town. And if the two match up well, then annexation can take place. And annexation is the incorporation of land into the town. The comprehensive plan for Emmitsburg, which is adopted, its official policy, identifies areas where annexations are eligible, where properties can be petitioned for annexation. And this property is eligible for annexation. So the first kind of test has been met. It's been identified as a possible development project in the town's long-term plan. So it's identified as possible municipal growth or expansion area. Doesn't mean that has to happen. And you, as the elected officials of the town, have the discretion to decide what takes place. And as part of that discretion, should you decide to move forward, we would work with you to craft a really good conceptual development plan for the property so that you and the residents of the community can see what it is that you would likely get if you annex this property. And obviously, what we're looking for is improvements and benefits to the community at large, not just benefits that accrue to the owners of the property. So we're always thinking about how to integrate individual parcels into the whole of the community and do it in a way that makes sense in the town's overall growth and development. Okay, so I just wanted to give you that reassurance. That's where our efforts would be devoted at your direction.
Thanks, sir.
Good evening. So with respect to the actual, the legal process, as Chris indicated, it is, it's a long one and it is an iterative process. And so what happens is you would eventually have three documents to consider should this proceed. The first is the resolution, which is fairly straightforward. It describes the amount of property and the meets and bounds that would be part of the annexation. There would be an annexation agreement. And what this agreement is, is a contract between the town and the developer. And it sets forth in black and white what the requirements are for the property to come into the town, what any concessions would be, if there are points that the town considers to be critically important. I know that we've spent a fair amount of time talking about a bypass, among other things, as well as financial considerations that would be proffered by the developer in connection with the annexation. And then the third part is typically crafted by the planner, and that would be the annexation plan itself. And we could talk about that later, but this is all sort of a package deal. And it's what comes out at the end of, as I indicated, a very long process. And as President O'Donnell indicated at the outset of the meeting, I keep calling it a meeting, I should not call this a meeting, I should call this a workshop. What President O'Donnell indicated at the outset of the workshop is that this is just for information. Annexation is a very public process. And so it's not like all of a sudden you're going to wake up one day and there's 300 houses out there. That's not the way this works. And it's also a very long process and it would be part of a phasing schedule. It has to meet all the APFO requirements. It would have to be, the plans would have to be reviewed by the planning commission. It gets a lot of scrutiny. So unless you have any questions, I will stop talking and you can turn it over to the potential applicants.
Well, we'll turn to the mayor first. Mr. Bear, any comments before we begin?
Yes, yes, thank you, sir. I just have a prepared little statement here. Good evening. On behalf of the town of Emmitsburg, I'd like to thank the commissioners, the developer and their councils, and those in the community for taking their time to be here and talk to us about the possible annexation of what we call the Fraley Farm. The Fraley Farm sits west of town, on the other side of the Myers Community Park. The property borders the town of Emmitsburg. And Mr. Ott, on behalf of OPI Development Services, is going to be presenting their preliminary thoughts. Mr. Ott has been involved in land development for 20 years, starting his work with the National Home Building Companies. And then he founded his own company, and then he founded his own, again, excuse me, his own company, OPI, five years ago. He provides development entitlement services for developers throughout the state of Maryland. His counsel is Bruce Dean, who's here with us this evening. He is attorney representing OPI in connection with the potential project. Mr. Dean has been involved in land use and development issues for over 30 years. He has experience in land use council, as a land use council. He is with the firm of McCurdy, Dean, and Gredior, and Frederick. This evening, as you have heard, is simply an opportunity for Mr. Ott and his colleagues to hear about some potential ideas for the development of the Fraley Farm and to get input from the commissioners. If they decide to proceed, there will be many public meetings, many, many public meetings, workshops, both before the planning commission and the commissioners. Thank you for coming to make this presentation here and hear the commissioners' comments. Thank you, commissioners, for your thoughtful consideration. The staff and I have met with development team twice and we just have listened to them. And they've said they would like to come before the board of commissioners to get their ideas. And we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So we've heard from the mayor, we've heard from our planner and our attorney. We now turn to the presentation. Good evening, welcome.
Yeah. I'm not sure which is the best way, if it's visible to see without the lights off or...
Whoops.
All right. Whoever can see my face turn red while I do my presentation here. It's a, that is a little bit more of a challenge. Yeah, if we could. There we go. That's better. Thank you. For the record, it's asking me to state my name. My name's Jeff Ott. My address is 221 Williamsburg Drive in Silver Spring, Maryland. First of all, thank you for having us this evening, giving us the opportunity to present what we think is a fantastic opportunity in the Fraley Farm. And I would invite you all to interrupt me as I go through this, to ask your questions as we go through, try to make this a little bit of an interactive workshop. If we could go to the agenda slide, please. First, I wanted to just provide a brief summary of what we're going to try to accomplish here tonight, give you a quick summary of what we're going to be discussing. First, we'll introduce the Fraley Farm and some of the details of that farm. We'll talk a little bit about the entitlement and annexation process. We'll introduce you to the team that endeavors to get this done. We will get into the concept plan. And again, what we're going to present here relative to the concept plan tonight is a very preliminary look at some of the feedback that we've gotten so far from the people that we've talked to, the mayor and such. But it is still very much a blind canvas of what is going to ultimately become a reality here. And then to close out, we're going to talk about some of the benefits and the challenges that we'll need to overcome in order to make this a reality. So if you could please. So first, the introduction to the Fraley Farm. The Fraley Farm is an 118-acre farm, as it was previously stated. It is designated to be annexed into the town in the town of Emmitsburg's 2000 comprehensive plan for residential growth. You can see, again, as the mayor said, it's located just west of town. And it does abut the town, and that's important. That's one of the comp plan stipulations is for annexation. Any property should abut the community or the town. As you can see, this little dotted line here, of the 118 acres, 15 acres is already within the town limits. What we're going to propose is annexing the remainder of that into the town. We look at this as an opportunity for the town of Emmitsburg to provide a responsible, smart-growth community that helps energize Main Street and contributes to the needed infrastructure improvements of the town of Emmitsburg. And we're going to talk a lot more about both of those things as we go through this presentation. But generally, it is a very well-located property that can take advantage of a lot of what Emmitsburg has to offer. Next slide, please. So what we're showing here is the town's comprehensive plan map, its growth map. And this is the Fraley Farm here. And again, as was stated earlier by Chris, it is designated to be annexed into the town or it's assigned to be annexed into the town at some point. To first talk about annexation and the entitlement process, again, as Ms. Powell has said, this is a long process. This is going to be a collaborative process with you, the town council, the mayor, planning board, and such. The things that we are going to discuss and try to come to an agreement on or find the right answer to are things such as density, the types of products that would be built on this property, any APFO issues that will have to be dealt with, infrastructure improvements, and really anything else that's important to the town. We want to make this a very collaborative process. After all, this is your town and you want it to be as best as it can possibly be. So the next item I want to point out is, as we go through this entitlement and annexation process, we're going to use the 2015 comp plan stated goals as our guide. The Fraley Farm is designated in the comp plan as a low-growth, I'm sorry, a low-density residential community. What we would endeavor to provide is a smart-growth community that takes into consideration environmental factors, a density that is appropriate for the town of Emmitsburg, and product types that will also achieve the goals that the town is looking to achieve from an affordability and product standpoint. I sort of combined the two and three there, listening to the community. So one of the goals that I want to make sure that is portrayed here tonight is our willingness to listen to you all and, again, make this a collaborative process so that, at the end of the day, our goal is to provide a state-of-the-art development that enhances the town of Emmitsburg by implementing sustainable, smart-growth community standards that provide connectivity to Main Street and the surrounding parks. And by a smart-growth community, what we mean by that is housing near shops, offices, schools, parks, other amenities. Emmitsburg really provides a great opportunity to provide a place where people can live, work, and play. You've got the Catoctin Mountains, you've got the Myers Park there. You've got a lot of really wonderful things that I think will be very attractive to the potential residents of this town. And the idea behind smart growth is to take advantage of the existing things that the town has to offer and try to enhance them or amplify them. One of the considerations from a smart-growth community standpoint is to look at and consider the natural resources, the environmentally sensitive areas. This is the first thing that we look at when we look at designing a site plan or a concept plan, staying out of wetlands, protecting environmentally sensitive areas. That is of one of the utmost important things for us to consider. At the end of the day, we want to provide a community of different housing types and affordability ranges. We would like nothing more than to be able to provide local residents an opportunity to stay in their community where they've lived for many years, maybe in a new house that is a first-for-living situation where you can age in place. Secondly, we'd like to provide a product type that would allow a first-time homebuyer to afford to buy in this community. We all know how affordability is becoming more and more of an issue in the state of Maryland. I think this is an opportunity for us to provide entry-level housing that first-time homebuyers can afford. And then, at the end of the day, the single-family detached homes, small, big. We want to provide an opportunity for people to find a place to live that is safe, attractive, in a community that they love. And again, Emmitsburg, the town of Emmitsburg, really provides that setting for us. So next, I wanted to introduce you to the team and who was going to help us and help you with this annexation and entitlement process and ultimately get this developed to build houses. First, the development team is made up of myself, Bob Brebnik, and Tom Burnside. Together, we've got about 100 years of development experience. Tom is our in-house counsel. And I believe we've picked the best land use legal counsel in town. McCurdy, Dean, and Gradiator. Bruce Dean has been a fantastic part of our team, has provided a lot of great advice already. The engineering team that we've put together, again, I believe is second to none. We've done, we've assembled a joint venture, more or less, of the Soltez Group and Piedmont Design Group. The Soltez Companies is a larger firm with lots of resources that can get things done efficiently and very well. Mike Wiley of the Piedmont Group is the guy that knows the local process, the local politics a little bit better, and knows how to navigate the system better than sort of a larger firm that doesn't know the local intricacies. We really do believe that that team is a very strong team that can get this project done. And again, at the end of the day, collaborate with you all to design the best community for this 118 acres. All right, so before we move on to the concept plan, I again wanted to reiterate, very preliminary, what we've tried to do is take into account some of the feedback that we've gotten so far. We were recently given some notes, some emails from the town council or the town commissioners. We weren't really able to incorporate a lot of that into this presentation yet, but we'll certainly consider it as we move along. When we present the concept plan, we're going to present it to you in three sort of layers. One is the road connectivity, two is pedestrian network, and three is the product types and where we would propose to lay them out. So first, if we could put up the road network. Before we get into this, I wanted to make sure that we state that we recognize that Main Street is a, the congestion on Main Street is an issue that needs to be addressed. And what we've tried to do here is, well, take a preliminary look at that. We've proposed some solutions here, but at the end of the day, we're going to have to continue to work with you, a traffic consultant, to gauge our proposed solutions, to see how well they solve the problem, and ultimately also look at potential other solutions that we haven't identified yet. So all right, so our road, our vehicle vehicular circulation plan. What we've done, what we're presenting here is basically four points of egress. We have these two, which is basically an extension of Lincoln Avenue out to Annandale. The idea here is that any of our residents within this community wouldn't need to go all the way up to Main Street to get over to Seton. They'd be able to take this Lincoln Avenue road over to Seton to either head north or south. Again, a lot of this needs further study, but that's one of the ideas. The other benefit or the other concept of this connection is that anybody on, coming from Annandale, wouldn't have to go up to Fraley and over to Main Street. They'd be able to take this Lincoln Ave connection and avoid that congestion on Main Street. The two points here on Annandale, the other way that we think that this community will have a very minimal impact on the Main Street congestion is this, these access points would allow residents to head down south on Annandale, ultimately down through Mount St. Mary's and head south that way instead of having to go up to Main Street and over, and then down south. So one of the first things that we heard when we approached the town about developing this property was the idea of a bypass road. And in the comprehensive plan, the bypass road more or less follows this main spine road to our community. When we looked at that, the cost of doing that road was quite high and prohibitive. And it would have required a much more significant density than we think is reasonable, responsible growth for this community. So at the end of the day, we've shelved that idea and tried to come up with a couple of other ideas. So two, the two of those ideas are, one is to take this Stoner Lane connection off of Main Street up here and connect it through our community to come down to either this Lincoln Avenue connection or continue further down, come across here. And this arrow represents a potential connection with Cedar Avenue through the park. And again, all of this needs further study, contemplation with all parties involved, especially another traffic engineer. Let's see if I have anything else to say. I don't, I think that pretty much covers our vehicular circulation plan. Anybody have any questions so far? Keep on going. I'll keep on going. Okay. So the next plan, if you will, is our pedestrian connectivity, the trail sidewalk system along with the green spaces. What we've tried to do here is provide an amenity to the community as well as the town by providing connectivity to the parks and Main Street. So the first thing I want to point out is we've got sort of the two parks here. First, this linear park off of Fraley Road, we think will act as a community space, not only for our neighborhood, but also the town of Emmitsburg as a gathering spot that would help, again, energize Main Street with some more foot traffic. The second park is more of a central park within our neighborhood. This would act more for neighborhood activities. Third is this yellow line here would be a hiker-biker trail, a paved pathway that is complemented by a greenway to make for just a beautiful experience connecting the Myers Community Park up to Fraley and ultimately Main Street. And the fourth element from a connectivity or a pedestrian amenity would be our natural path hiker trails, which are represented by this dotted line here and also connected via our sidewalk network, which is the solid white lines. All with the idea of providing connectivity within our neighborhood, connectivity with the community, all trying to get foot traffic up to Main Street and into the park system. All right. Finally, is the product concept plan, the land use diagram. What we're trying to accomplish here, again, is to provide a range of product types and affordability ranges. So what this yellow block would represent is townhomes. And the idea here is an entry-level first-time homebuyer product. The brown shades are a mixture of small lot singles and larger lot singles. And then the tan is a combination of the three. And on those product types, they would be more And on those product types, they would be more in line to be able to offer a broad spectrum of housing types, whether it's first for a living or more of a second move up type of product. We could certainly accommodate those types of products within that within those land use blocks. One point about architecture. We would certainly want to put some architectural restrictions on what we would build here that would complement the existing architecture of the town of Emmitsburg, something that would reflect the best of what the town has to offer from a visual standpoint or architectural standpoint. But that's, that's pretty far down the line to get into the details of that, but just wanted to point that out. So the next thing we wanted to talk about was to sort of highlight some of the benefits that we see from the development of the Frailly Farm into a residential community. And then ultimately some of the challenges, and I'm going to ask Bruce to step up and talk about some of those challenges. But if we could go to the next slide. The first benefit that we see is our partnering with the town to achieve one of the comp plan goals of annexing the Frailly Farm into the town. The second would be to help energize Main Street into a vibrant place for the entire community. The idea here is we're going to add some housing, obviously lots of foot traffic that is going to visit restaurants, the retail on Main Street and really give a shot in the arm into the Main Street community. It's an opportunity, Frailly Farms is an opportunity to build a responsible smart growth neighborhood of varying housing types and price points. We've talked a lot about that. At the end of the day, our goal would be to develop a community that is a place to live, work and play that people really want to live in. And then finally, the Frailly Farm will, at the end of the day, make a significant contribution to the infrastructure improvements related to the water sewer and traffic issues that the town faces right now. What that looks like specifically is to be determined. And again, that would be part of the annexation discussion and collaboration. Okay, from here, I want to ask Bruce to step up and talk about some of the challenges that this community is going to face.
Good evening. I think I've met all of you fairly recently, was here earlier this year on behalf of a much smaller project, but just as a reminder, my name's Bruce Dean. I am a land use attorney in Frederick, Maryland, office address of 31 West Patrick Street in Frederick. And it's a pleasure to be back here in Emmitsburg. As Chris and Leslie pointed out, the annexation process is kind of unique in the state of Maryland. Chris and Leslie and I have been living through that for the last four years in the town of Thurmont, immediately to the south of here. And that as Jeff described, it was also a very collaborative process between the town elected officials, the planning commission, planning staff and the developer. And we would expect nothing different here in Emmitsburg. We look forward to many meetings, not just with the elected officials, but also with staff, planning commission and your residents. Annexation is somewhat unique in that as opposed to like a site plan or a subdivision plan, it is completely voluntary on both the town's part and as well as the property owner and the developers part. So having done, I don't know how many dozens of annexations in my career. I can tell you that if it doesn't work for you, then you don't want to do it. And if it doesn't work for us, we don't want to do it. It has to be something that it works for both the benefit of the town and for the property owner and the developer. And sometimes that's easier to make work than others. But as Jeff pointed out, this property has been in your town's comprehensive plan for many years. Chris and I were talking about it before the meeting, the workshop started tonight. Because I can't remember how many 10, 15 or more years, it was at least the comprehensive plan before your current comprehensive plan. It was already in your town's plan back then. So it has been quote unquote, on the books as a potential development for a long time. And so it, we are hoping that we can, that this is the right time, but, but we won't know that until we get through this process. One of the things Jeff pointed out several times that I actually told him we really needed to focus on because we heard it when I, when I was before you earlier this year, doing the demit rezoning is that the town has a lot or has had a lot of single family detached housing built and developed over the last 20 or 30 years. What it has not had is a mixture of housing types. And we heard that from your former planning commission chair, we heard it from citizens and we've, we heard it from Zach Golden, your town planner. And it is something we really want to do. But at the same time, as Jeff pointed out, we also need to help fix the infrastructure issues that the town is facing. And those are generally water sewer and traffic and schools. And, and it's not easy and it's a balancing act. So as Jeff mentioned, the comp planned bypass road, we looked at it. It looked like the cost of building that road would have required a density on Frailly that would have not been in keeping with your comprehensive plan. It would have been 500 plus housing units. And we know, and we heard back loud and clear from your staff that that was not something that they wanted us to pursue. So we're really looking at a low density project, which would be in the R1 range, which is four units to the acre. But smaller than that or less dense than that, four units per acre on Frailly. I'm not going to do, try to do the math, but it's 450 houses or something. We would be nowhere near that, much closer to, to the 300 range. 300 on Frailly is lower than Maryland's smart growth requirements, which are supposed to be three and a half to the acre. But I think if you net out the roads, the trail systems and the parks, you probably get pretty close to three and a half on the, on the net. So we think it would be smart growth. In order to do that though, as an R1 community, we would propose probably a text amendment to the town to allow what's called a planned unit development or planned neighborhood development. It's actually referenced in your zoning ordinance. I looked at it a couple of times. It's in R1, it says a PUD is a permitted use, but there's no ordinance that says what a PUD is. So we would have to create that. If that's something, if the town wants to see a community like the one Jeff proposed, it shows, you know, a mixture of varying housing types, not just all single families or all townhouses. We would want to pursue a text amendment to allow a planned unit development. We just, we do those in Frederick City all the time. It, it gets the planning commission in the town, the benefit of additional green space. It is quote unquote smarter growth. You have smaller lots and then larger community areas. And that's the best way, frankly, that the development community knows of providing housing types that, that can meet a variety of, of, of price points. If we just do more all single family detached, if we were just in here proposing, you know, 150 or 200 single family houses. There's nothing wrong with that, but that's all you've had for the last several decades. And we're, we're trying to, we would like very much if the town would like it to do something different. One of the things we proposed, and I'm not going to ask to go back on the slide, but Jeff mentioned the greenway. That could also be a potential reservation area so that if funding ever, ever became available to do a bypass road, that would be a location where it would be reserved for the town to put that. If that's something the town wanted to pursue. Otherwise, we're going to have to work very hard with traffic engineers and with Chris and, and Kathy in the town to see if there are, as Jeff mentioned, other outlets for traffic that can be made, whether there's improvements that can be made to the Seton Avenue, Main Street connection, which I went through four times tonight, just to see how it worked at rush hour at six o'clock. And I'm sure that was nowhere near as busy as it can be during ski season and other times. So definitely there's issues there, but we, we look forward to working with you. Your town adequate public facilities ordinance does require that the road system be adequate or else we can't move forward. And frankly, as Leslie indicated during the, when her, she was introducing it, that's part of what the annexation agreement would do is we would try to identify and negotiate and put into a contract and annexation agreement some solutions that you felt would help you and we felt were doable from a development standpoint. Lastly, I want to talk about schools. That was a discussion we had earlier this year for a very small number of houses. Obviously we're proposing a significantly larger project here. Pluses and minuses, I'm sure I'm not telling you guys anything you don't know. The pluses are that the middle school and high school are way under capacity. They in fact need more students. The, the minus is Emmitsburg Elementary School only has a limited amount of capacity. We would want to work together hand in hand with you all to talk to the board of ed, the Frederick County Public Schools about what we can do. I know that there are discussions at, because we did have this conversation with Holly and Beth at the, at Frederick County Public Schools. There are sort of fuzzy, maybe getting more concrete plans to make improvements to Emmitsburg Elementary School. There are not any current plans to expand capacity at Emmitsburg. So that would require one of two options. One would be to limit the size of the Frailly development to a number that passed APFO. Or the other would be, and we talked about this several months ago, about working hand in hand with you on coming up with some other solutions that might work. Frederick City has a school mitigation fee option for development where if you are over 100% capacity, you pay additional funds to the town, not necessarily directly to the board of ed, but would be paid to the town of Emmitsburg. Other things that could be looked at, it's already in your adequate public facilities ordinances redistricting. I don't even like to mention redistricting. I've put four kids through Frederick County Public Schools and I know what that's like for the community. Frankly, any kid who is growing up in a house in Emmitsburg deserves to go to an elementary school in Emmitsburg since you have one. So we would have to look at your adequate public facilities and see what the right resolution to that would be. But it would have to be something that made sense for you and, and for us and for Frederick County Public Schools. So with that, I think I am done with my part of the presentation, other than to say thank you all for agreeing to have this workshop with us. Thank you for the emails that you provided to the town, which we got copies of last week. As Jeff said, we haven't really had a chance to incorporate them into our planning process yet. But I did notice that some of the comments you made, we are addressing and some were not, and we're going to have to work at. So not to say to beat a dead horse, but it is a lengthy, lengthy process to go through annexation, particularly one in a town that doesn't see a lot of annexations. It's one thing in Frederick City where they have two or three going on at any one time. But in a town like Emmitsburg where they happen rarely, in fact, Commissioner Sweeney, I think you were on the board when I did Josh Ballinger's annexation, which ultimately did not stay in the town. And, and so you still have a hole in your donut there. But in any event, you, you recall very well what a process that was. And so just to end with this note, no one on our team wants to do this in any way, shape or form, if you don't want it, have it happen. Okay? Because annexation is this weird land use animal that's purely voluntary for everybody. It makes no sense for Mr. Ott and his team to be spinning their wheels if it's not something you guys want to see. I know from having met with Mayor Briggs and your town staff. And from what we've heard in prior public meetings, there is some appetite for some different types of housing in the town of Emmitsburg. The question is how much? And the question is, can we afford to make the improvements that are going to be necessary to, to allow that to happen? You do have infrastructure issues outside of just roads and schools. There's water and sewer issues. Jeff mentioned them briefly. But we know that putting in a sewer pump station, putting in a water treatment plant, those sorts of things are going to be required. You just don't have the excess infrastructure right now to do it. Those things aren't cheap. So you know, we have to, we have to come to a happy medium that works for you and for us or, or, you know, we smile, we shake hands and, and, and don't move forward. That is not our goal. Our goal would be very much to make this move forward. But we want to do that with your assistance and as something that you all want to see happen. So thank you for your time. And I think this probably starts the more interactive part of our presentation. So I can either stand up here and take questions or Jeff can, or any of our team can. So, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. So walking through the process, we've heard from the mayor, we've heard from staff, we've heard about the entitlement plan or get it regarding the, the team. We've seen our presentation, we've heard the project benefits format. So I put in front of the board, we just want to move the same way that we would move through a typical meeting where someone's just, you know, speaks up, they wait their turn and they, they chime in. Does that work for the commission? Okay. Before we go to that, I turned to staff. Did we put a limit on our time? Or are we going to frame it with just the questions that are in front of us? Okay. So not to be unfair, but if we could have a goal of trying to finish at nine PM, would that be sufficient for the board? Okay. Mr. Mayor, very good. Okay. So let's have that as our target collectively.
Perfect.
Nine PM is our end time, if not sooner, not that we're trying to rush anything.
No, no, I think that's a good amount of time.
Just put a framework on it. I haven't heard anyone say Monday night football, so. Okay. So moving forward. Questions for the presenters, anybody? Mr. Ritz, you want to start? You do not want to start. All right. Mr. Sweeney. Mr. Sweeney, if you could turn your mic on. Thank you, sir.
We're, we're hurting for parking in town, very bad.
Oh, you're talking about the front park area?
Right. The, the park area, it'd be nice to maybe put this, a small parking lot or some kind of parking lot there where we, people could park it and access to town by walking, which we don't have a lot of now.
I, I actually was surprised at how hard it was to find a Main Street parallel parking place this evening. It's pretty, pretty cool for a Monday night. That means people are out and about. So.
I am also for the Lincoln Avenue extension. I think that would be helpful for the alleyway and we could probably disconnect the little where it comes out now and, and have it, if, if it went through that way and come out on the end of deal. But then I also would like the Cedar Avenue connection from the park, that will give them another way to get southbound.
Okay. Would, you wouldn't have heart, I mean, we thought of that too, and I thought it was a pretty.
It's all, it's already double line, almost all the way through the park to get to the parking lot.
Okay. Great. And Cedar Avenue is in a little bit, maybe even a lot better width than Lincoln is.
And also we, we want to be for the store management, we, we were having all for problems with MS4. Now we need to make sure that we can get some, some kind of MS4 points or whatever from.
You thinking additional planting areas or street mitigation?
Anything we can do with plantings and credits that we can get for them as for because every five years they require.
Okay.
The storm management would be. The storm management would be put in as, we have to upgrade our store management now here in town. At Sado Hill to get credit for the MS4.
Gotcha. Okay.
So any, any kind of environmental asphalt sidewalks where it would drain down through would help out considerable with our credit points. Due to development, the road.
Mr. Ritz, someone's broken the ice. Are you ready?
Sure, no, I just thought what Commissioner Sweetie said I actually disagree with. Lincoln Avenue. I foresee that causing a lot of issues, individuals wanting to avoid the square.
Yeah.
Cutting through there. So I don't know what what that's gonna, how that's gonna change Lincoln Avenue at all right now for current residents.
Yeah, we would, we'd have to engage a serious traffic engineer. I don't disagree with you. I drove on Lincoln Avenue when I was doing my four circuits, all four times and it's got limited right away with, people live on it, you can't knock people's houses down, you can't impact their lives like that. So it would, it would have to be carefully done if it's at all possible. I don't disagree with that.
And I'm also concerned with the Cedar Avenue bypass, basically cutting through the existing, adjacent to the existing community of South Gate. Who probably did not foresee such a bypass going right through their community.
Don't disagree with that either.
And then the parkland that would be current parkland, I don't know exactly what that would, it cuts through Community Park per the plan. I don't know how that would affect any of what we currently have there. Around the dog park area.
It looks like it comes out where the dump is. That's where the townyard, it looks like it's where it comes out now.
Disc golf, does that affect that at all?
No.
No.
If it comes out at the dump, it wouldn't affect anything.
No, I'm talking, I'm talking about.
The dog parks up here. There's, there's, there's a little gate here where we store ball field bags and stuff.
Gotcha.
Which connects to the.
And then I do have other questions too, but obviously some of those, like we said, we, you didn't get a chance to address those. This is a lengthy process. So I'm not gonna hash on those tonight.
Okay.
Just some of the things that came to my mind. I might come up with something else as I go along tonight, too.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready?
Yes.
Okay.
I have lots of questions. Is the sale of the farm, or Frailly Farm pending annexation?
I'm sure it is, but yes. I mean, if, if annexation didn't, did not occur, it would not be transferred. If that's what you're asking.
Yes. I also have concerns about the traffic. You stated yourself that Lincoln, it's just an alley. I don't see that. And then how do they get back out from Lincoln onto South Seton? Are they, are we gonna have people turning left and right off of Lincoln? And I do think people would avoid Main Street. Cedar Avenue. I'm right off of South Gate. And that would be cutting our park right through between the ball fields. Would that also mean that we would lose the parking spaces for the park in that area?
We could certainly make a combination for that, whether it's new parking or the alignment of that road is to be determined. The alignment of all the roads is to be determined.
Right.
Something was important to you as, you know, preserving that parking, we could certainly try to work around.
I think my bigger concern is preserving the park versus cutting it through with a busy thoroughfare. Right now, it's a very pleasant walk from one end of that park all the way to the other. And now we would be putting in a busy street that would effectively cut that in half. So I'm not in favor of that personally. Because I think our community park is one of the gems that we have in our town. And I think a lot of our community would probably agree with that, that we value our green space and we don't want to see a busy. I'm speaking for myself. See a busy road go through there. I'm also concerned about the number of cars with 300 houses. What you're proposing here, I don't think would alleviate the amount of cars that would come with that development. And yes, the bypass is expensive. However, I think 300 houses is way too much for that land. Knowing what we have to sit through right now at Main Street to get in and out is, is very lengthy. I turn off of Cedar Avenue to get into my development. And sometimes I have to wait to even get to Cedar Avenue. So the two solutions you're proposing are so far up of South Seton that I don't see how that's gonna help alleviate the problem. The other question I have is with 300 houses, how many kids do you estimate would be coming in with that?
I don't know that I have that exact number. Do you, Mike? On 300 houses, do you know? Did we?
So for the elementary, you're estimating probably 30? That's, that's low. As a Frederick County Public School teacher, I can tell you those estimates are never right. And I can tell you because when we had a developer come in at Spring Ridge Elementary School, they told us the, the number of students were going to be low and we ended up with 16 portables. We had more classrooms outside than we had inside. I know, I work for the system. I'm not afraid to say that doesn't work. Having been a teacher. So that's something that I would like, I mean, if you're estimating like apartments have no kids, for example, or townhouses have one, that doesn't work. I know that you didn't set that, but I'm just telling you in reality, we would be, we would be in portable city with, with our elementary schools. So with more cars, the road issues, the schools being overcrowded. I understand the middle school, I understand the middle of high school. But there in Thurmond, the one that we have in our community would be overpopulated. So, and it's our youngest, our youngest children who are already in a school that is not updated enough to current safety standards. It's an open school and we know the times that we live in right now. Putting more kids outside in portables, I don't think it's conducive for safety. We have a lot of updates in that school that needs to happen already. And I think you know from working with public schools that even when it's approved for a new school, you're still looking at five years down the road. So we would be left with I mean, I don't know if that goes into a phasing issue and that's something more for Frederick County Public Schools to discuss. But I do foresee that being an issue. How do you foresee with the market dropping the way it is, South Gate, for example, still isn't completely finished and they started building in 2004 or sometime around then. So we have areas here that aren't completely finished yet. And it's 2022. How do you foresee that happening with this development?
So I guess my response to that is that's very difficult to assess, but our feeling is that with the pandemic came remote and hybrid working. Combine that with the overall lack of affordability in our market would make Emmitsburg a very attractive community when you couple it with the amenities that it has to offer. So by providing a range of affordable, a range of price points, we would be able to absorb 300 units a whole lot faster than, say, if we just had, you know, large, single family detached houses. So at the end of the day, you know, it's just impossible to give a real clear answer to that. But again, affordability being such a strong issue within the state. This community being able to provide relatively affordable, I mean, it's hard to.
What does that mean exactly? How does affordability translate to dollar signs? What are you thinking?
Well, I think the townhouses are probably in the 300 range. And you have the small singles in the 400 range and the larger singles in the 500 range. And that's based on, you know, today's market. Right? So you know, it's, it's very speculative, but when you read the news today, you, you hear of this recession coming and a significant housing correction coming. I think that's true in a lot of places, but it's not very true in a state like Maryland because we control our growth so much. We don't have the supply of housing that a place like Idaho or Nevada or Arizona has put together or allowed to be built. So if you look at our sort of overall market right now, we only have 1.3 months of supply out there and that's including resale houses. So the opportunity for first time home buyers is becoming less and less and less. This is, in our opinion, a very good opportunity to provide housing for that demographic.
Thank you for that. Let me also ask, along the border of the community park, I don't know if you've ever been out there or walked that area in the rain. It's very wet. If I'm reading this correctly, do you have houses budding right up to the park? The backyards, I mean. Or maybe you don't know that yet.
We don't really know that yet. And it's something that we would certainly take into consideration. And if there's a way to mitigate that wetness, dampness, we would do that. But yes, we, the, like we said, the plan is very much a, it's just sort of an idea right now that hasn't been fully vetted yet.
Okay. Our businesses, I like how you say to revive Main Street because I do think we need more traffic to Main Street for our businesses. But the only thing I heard you say to revive Main Street would be to increase foot traffic. I think somebody already mentioned where we're hurting for parking. And we also don't have a lot of room for new businesses to move into. There's very few spaces left on our Main Street. Is that, I don't know, is that something we consider? It's bringing in, you know, space for business because between parking and location, there's not very many places our businesses can go. And if we have increased foot traffic, you would want additional businesses for those people to patronize.
So that was one of the comments that we got last week that we really haven't had the time to consider. Certainly a possibility, you know, where we're proposing the linear, linear park up on Frailly Road. If we were to put commercial use up there, that's would be the logical place to do it. And we could more or less extend what Main Street is offering. Now, so again, it's just when we originally looked at this plan or this project, commercial wasn't what sort of screamed out at us. And then when we looked at the comprehensive plan, it was a low density residential community. So that's sort of what we ran with. And the feedback that we got to date was a mix of product on residential side, nothing really related to commercial. So we can certainly consider it.
I do like how you have the, the linear park there for the whole community to enjoy. What I think would be even more beneficial is if we could move that. I don't want to see a segmented housing development. It, I would like to see something that draws the rest of the town in to make use of. So it doesn't feel isolated. Like some of the other communities might right now that we have. For example, is there a community pool that we could put right in the middle that everybody can make use of? Or move that park to the middle to draw them into the community? So it's not just surface level and driving right by. I mean, I don't know. Those are just thoughts I'm, but I would, I don't think anybody wants another community where they feel is completely segmented. And I think connecting the trails to the park will help. But I would like to see some additional ideas to bring that community into that space.
Okay.
I think that's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Davis.
No, they actually answered all my concerns. I think they read my notes because they answered all, everything I had. So that was good.
We definitely read them.
Yeah. And, and I do like the, the part of the variety of, of housing. Because I've always said that it's, doesn't seem fair that our young families don't have a place to get started here in Emmitsburg. And then our seniors have to move out because they want to get rid of their big homes. And, you know, they, they don't have that opportunity and a lot of lifelong residents had to move out of Emmitsburg. To find someplace to retire and it's not fair to them and it's not fair to us. So I do like that part. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No, your presentation's been pretty complete and I understand where you are and sort of the nascent process. So I also know that we have more of an opportunity moving down the road for more comments. But I know that you're trying to frame your, your goals to align with ours. I do favor the rectilinear versus the cul-de-sac and dead end piece and that there's a flow to it that adds value in my opinion. I can't quite say I'm a new urbanist, but I definitely like some of the concepts about the walkability and the scale piece. And one of the things I think we're moving toward for like a household income supplement or a family extension would be like a granny flat. But what I worry about is the impervious surface of having an alley behind a home. So we have a narrow street out front and we have parking off street in an alley. But there's that income source where we do have the university nearby that would allow a household to bring in a border. Or put, you know, an elderly adult out there if it's a safe circumstance. So I don't know if that's going to play into what your offerings are. The other piece is not to be too redundant, but the diversity of housing costs is profoundly important to our community. But sometimes we fall into a trap where if we have too much student housing or if we have savvy parent investors, we find a cash cow for somebody who says, wonderful school, wonderful community, let's put the kids there and cash in on it. So there's, there's a worrisome piece to that. It's a double edged sword in that, you know, we love our school, we love our community and we love their involvement in our community. But there's that boundary piece. And I think the push there would be enforceable HOA pieces, but we're not there yet. The other piece is regarding the paths, wonderful to see. I don't know if there's a possibility of a circuit to put people around the neighborhood as opposed to having them walk to Scott Road Farm and then dead end to the Frailly, the Frailly Road piece right there. However, with some creativity in the week, we can work our way around that for looping versus just singular and more of them. The other piece is our neighborhood, I would argue, is hidden. And we lack sidewalks for this wonderful water management system and it's a curse. Because our kids play in the streets and it's wonderful that our kids have a place to play, but for them to go and be social, they lack the sidewalks. So if sidewalks are part of the design, it's a better design in my view. Beyond that, I have no questions and thank you for coming in. I turn to the mayor or staff. Mr. Mayor, do you want to jump in?
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Some, I think from the very beginning, I'm, yeah, I live and work here. And I have lived to work here, like many people here, of mine for only 20 years. And I, from the beginning, I talked about integrating this into the town as a resource where everybody can enjoy. It would, the appreciation may be of real estate, but also life that they get here and It would the appreciation, maybe a real estate, but also life that they get here and I I. I like to see West Lincoln Avenue, you have to be very polite on. And at rush hour. And we get some people cutting through to avoid lights, and it can get. It's just one of those things, and when you you're being polite and somebody else isn't being polite, it's 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 very awkward situation on on Lincoln Avenue there. And I I don't, I don't think that that's really in the game plan. It's just too much in the houses back there. And those houses back there haven't, for some reason, were not put it into our. National Historic Places back in nineteen ninety-two, that model. And but we hope to have them in back there because it's a wonderful neighborhood that was set aside for. Some of our people and. Ten wood, ten-foot-wide pave. I need that for me. The flow that I see down in Frederick and all through Frederick County, this wonderful thing, and people are out there walking dogs, riding bicycles, and it ties into the community park and a couple of points. And also gets up to Main Street that this is part of the neighborhood of of a town. It's it's not, as the commissioners say, it's not one of these something that's over here added on. It's 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 part of the town, and I'd really like to see that the that that there and. Easement across to Tom's Tom's Creek to the town. And I think the homeowners association should, I can envision maybe that path going along Tom's Creek, and you you get a little part of that nature in there. And we we have five hundred, nine hundred acres over there. We're dying to get people to and and Commissioner O'Donnell is with his. Motorcycle bike, no, no, I'm sorry, biking. Something up there. Now, it's just. To get to, and and we were dying to get cut through there and have that, but the the shoreline should be part of the responsibility of the homeowners association. We have that easement there and to get across there and. It's really, really important to me. We fashion something like they have down in Frederick where you all over, everybody can, I can see. You go down there at all these parks and see these people out walking and walking, walking. They're trying to get around here now. It's so awkward with our, a lot of part of the community with our. Two hundred-year-old scheme, a wonderful scheme, but but we we really wanna see if everybody can make it a part of the of the community. But thank you. That's my remarks. Thank you, sir.
Can you follow up? Or are you good where you are at the moment?
I think we're good.
Okay, we turn to staff. Mr. Kubiak, any thoughts or?
Just a few things to to throw out. The Emmett House is a significant historic resource, and that setting is really important. And so as I engage with the team, I'd be looking to ensure that that. Area there is preserved in a way that really makes it look like Emmitsburg, and and it is not interrupted or disrupted by these other types of. Projects that might have a relationship to it. So that setting is really important. And wouldn't be great if the the kids in the neighborhood could walk to the elementary school. So that right now there there's a park, a linear park in many ways that separates this South Gate and maybe even future development along Cedar. The the park is kind of like common ground now between, and when I look at these plans, between two parts of the town. So how people walk, connect through or bike through that park becomes really important. And the scenic views, even in dating back years ago, the the comprehensive plans the town has have had have shown this site as having scenic vistas. So when you you head out in Annandale, when you actually actually lead out. Really, you you have a sense of that open space, and so I I'd be challenging the the applicants to show us where the scenic views are and to not block them with townhouses or developments or houses, but to keep that vista open. And to, you know, at this stage, we have room to maneuver to keep the most important things and unique things about this sense of place preserved. So those are just some of the items. There's so much here to to work with, and I thought. All the comments that you had were the the council commissioners had were the things I was thinking about myself.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Powell, any comment regarding process or moving forward?
No, we have a long way to go if this proceeds, and so I think we'll have plenty of opportunity to talk about it at that point. But from a legal standpoint, we're, as somebody said, we're at the nascent stages.
Great, thank you. So to really to reiterate some points, there's nothing being voted on by the board tonight. There's no decision that's being made tonight. There's nothing in front of us from the developer tonight regarding the intent to annex any property into town. So this has been a workshop for the purpose of conversation and disclosure and transparency. And and that might be stunning because it's sort of new. So this is a good thing. Moving forward from there, if we do hear from an applicant, it becomes public record, and from there, there is a process that is triggered. And that process guarantees public input at many levels. Ultimately, it comes down to the board and a vote should that happen. So when the board convenes, it is a public meeting, and there's again time for public comment. Don't wait till the end should something like that ever happen, however. It is a process that one can help modify or steer or end. So please be mindful that you have every opportunity as a community to weigh in on what we have in front of us potentially. So on that. Mr. Davis.
Yeah, just one question. Maybe this is a dumb one that nobody can answer, but what what are we looking at time-wise? I mean, are we we talking? Two years, five years, two months? I mean, is is that a fair question or unfair question?
That's a very fair question. So there's two parts to that, and Leslie and Chris are, who are working on your behalf, are two experts on this subject. To a certain extent, it takes as long as you want it to. Once we get to a formal petition for annexation, there is a state law process that it goes through. But the timing is really on you. It is typical that the town legislative body, the Board of Commissioners, would refer any petition for annexation to your planning commission for review and comment. And so when Chris and Leslie were talking about there being lots of public input, that's where the public input starts. When we did our most recent annexation in Thurmond, how long were we at the planning commission, Chris? Two years? And a part of that was, part of that was the pandemic. But but it it's regardless, it's a lengthy process, but your planning commission can somewhat determine how long they want to have to review it and to to ask the applicant to make changes to it before they have a final vote on it and forward it to you. Once there's an annexation resolution in front of you, Leslie, it it speeds up a little bit.
It does.
So so you you wanna be careful, and Leslie will guide you through that process. You don't wanna introduce the resolution and start the clock ticking any faster than you want it to. So I would suggest you work with Chris and Leslie to make sure that the process doesn't go any faster than you want it to or any slower. But you can kind of control that. And we would, you know, not to speak too much for for Jeff, but knowing how these annexations work and how. Honestly, there can be, it it's among the most. What's the word I'm looking for? I don't wanna say contentious because we are not in a contentious mode. We are collaborative. But your residents, you know, find annexations pretty. It it's a lot for them to 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 absorb, and as was pointed out by several of you, you know, particularly if we're proposing any changes to the way their daily life works, they're gonna wanna have a lot of input into that, whether it's Cedar Avenue, whether it's your park, whether it's Lincoln. Any of those things, you're gonna wanna make sure that the public is fully engaged. So it's a really long-winded way of saying you control the time. But I would foresee that it it would probably not be less than an eighteen-month process. I mean, and that would be, it's almost full speed ahead. We're not quite there yet, so we've gotta take everything we heard tonight. We gotta meet more with Chris and you and Kathy and your staff and make sure we can come up with something that at least staff is supportive of. That's almost, you know, the then 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 the process really starts.
Okay, yeah, I'm just hoping that we can stay away from what's happening in Thurmond now. You know, obviously, they, this this thing was going on for a couple of years and didn't hear anything out of the citizens until it got passed. And now the citizens are up in arms, and I really hope we can find a way to keep our community involved and at least educated. You know, if they don't come out and participate, well, then shame on them, but I'm gonna try to eliminate what's happening in Thurmond right now.
But well, I will say with respect to that, there was lots of opportunity for public comment there as well.
Oh, sure.
And unfortunately, sometimes people don't get real clarity of focus until they're looking at the train.
Great.
You know, and that's and that's human nature. But I think that this is a good first step in terms of getting things on the table, talking about the problems, very frankly. You know, with the applicant, and hopefully with all of that, you can reach a resolution that will will benefit everybody, and hopefully the the citizens, the residents of the town will agree.
Right.
Anything you guys could do to keep people involved and aware from our end, it's much better than trying to, you know, beat off a firestorm at the very last second when you didn't know it was coming.
Right. Well, I think we have a good start. We see some some business owners here, which is, it means a lot and, you know, residents, so.
Great.
That's good.
Yep, thanks.
Let me ask you to go to the podium. Let me ask you to go to the podium. Thank you.
Good evening. Mike Wiley with Piedmont. I just wanna say I think it was testament to the advertisement you all put on the website that you had people here to listen. And we're always open to hear what you and the residents have to say, because as Jeff said, this is your town, and we wanna integrate in it and do something that everybody can be happy with. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sweeney?
I'm fine.
Okay, all right, so. The time is eight twenty-two. We'll conclude the workshop at this time. Staff? Very good. Okay, so thank you, everybody, for coming. Very grateful for your attendance. Good night.